From the board. I have big questions.
Hold on, hold on.
Never a change of the rules.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Do you want to roll now, please?
Trustee Bethel, trustee Price.
Here.
Trustee Sally.
Here.
Trustee Winkleblack. Mayor Wilcox.
Here.
I would like to read this to the plan of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Page number three, revisions relations to the agenda. Changes. Okay. Persons not on the agenda. Please leave the comment thirty minutes and add your comments directly to the mayor. Identify yourself by name and address when making comments. Comments. Should be made courteous and civil and constructive. The board will make no decision or take action except to direct the town manager or attorney. So first up, we have Tilda Evans.
Um, some members of this board, when they were elected, were very concerned about the financial transparency of the town. I'm just wondering, oh, and I'm Tilda Evans, three thousand one Orchard Avenue. And I'm just wondering how you're authorizing the paying of bills for the town. I haven't seen a finance report for approval since April. It's rather difficult to keep track of the budget and provide financial transparency if you aren't getting finance reports.
The next should be Brandy White.
Well, see. Great. Uh, Brandy Colburn. They just finished already, thank you. I don't want to come up there. You guys, for all of the words of July stuff that we did together. Organized the parade. Just thank you all for going for the shenanigans. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay. Item number five, consent agenda. Items in nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the board of trustees to spend its time and energy on more important items on the agenda. Any board member or any member of the public may request that an item be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the regular agenda. So we have the minutes from May sixth, fourteenth, sixteenth, May twentieth, June third, twelfth, July first, and July thirty first.
I would like to move that we approve items B, C, D, G, and H, and move A, E, and F off for a short discussion.
Okay. I'll second that. Any further discussion? May we elope?
Just to clarify, it's A, C, and F that are coming up.
A, E is an elephant.
D.
And F.
Okay. Um, trustee Bethel.
Yes.
Trustee Price.
Yes.
Trustee Sally.
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so. The minutes for May sixth.
Yes. May sixth, item nineteen, we went into executive session. I just would like to request, um, as we did appropriately go into this executive session with motions and vote, with the motions and vote listed on that. And then item number twenty, executive session, dialing lack of motion. And I'd like that detail added on there. Um, the next one is June third. If there's any way you can list, um, who's absent? When, when, when a trustee's absent, trustee Sally was absent that night. And then, um, June twelfth. Item number six is an executive session, and we did have motion second and votes to enter that. And I'd just like to request that those who listed. So with that being said, I would like to motion that we approve them minutes from May sixth, June third, and June twelfth with mentioned edits.
It's amazing, right?
Yeah.
We have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? There we have a vote.
Trustee Bethel.
Yep.
Trustee Price.
Yes.
Trustee Sally.
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox.
Yes. Okay. Item number six. Bruce Smith update.
Um, as I look at the crowd, I was on the agenda. I think what we ought to do is give these people a break, particularly the guys from the county others, and, um, lift me down the agenda. No. Maybe down to make me item twelve and come back to it. People don't have to. Because this is going to take me more than my five minutes that I watch and so on some. Well, I know the guys from the county don't want to give away everything. Probably not very much.
Okay.
Yeah.
They need a motion for now. Item number seven. And there.
Before we start, I'll explain. Mr. Perrier has rented the auditorium. And he requests, he asked about a waiver for rental fee. Um, and I've not been comfortable waiving that fee, and that's why I brought it before we guys, so that those guys could make the decision.
They need a whole little.
No, well, maybe. I brought this along so that that's something to hold on to. That's easy. There's a picture of, as you can see, a picture of the fall of the auditorium. And we don't know for sure when this picture is taken. But without getting into a whole lot of detail, the old Oasis Hotel right there was built in nineteen eleven and burned down in nineteen sixty. In fact, it's July twenty-sixth, nineteen sixty. So we know that had been done, actually, it was between those two days. And the other thing that you can notice about the picture is all the flags. And it was only one year that they didn't have a big celebration for the Fourth of July and that period of time in Culver, and then it was in nineteen fourteen. Which I believe is probably Fourth of July nineteen fourteen from this picture was taken. We don't have any real proof. So it's just, this is just a dive into what we'd like to be about was a exhibit or an event at an auditorium early in September. And tentatively, we said it would be Labor Day weekend, and the reason I say tentatively is because, of course, we have to finish business here with you guys. And the other is we've got other people who may not be able to schedule at that particular time. So those things are gonna, we're gonna know right away whether, whether it's person September is the right day or not. That's what we need. And what we're asking is since our project, the exhibit for the apartment, what the event is, has to do with the uh, archive of living memory project that the town called and gave us a grant of four hundred and fifty dollars toward that object. And since that project has to do with what we want to do at the event and the auditorium, we'd like to ask if the town would waive the fees for the auditorium. And we'd, in exchange for that, we'd emphasize things to do with the auditorium since it'll be the first year, the post of the first years after this completed. And from what I understand, the completion's supposed to be on the thirteenth of August. It would say, depending on how the contractor does. So we'd be within time frame to be able to get in there and have our event around the first of September. So barring any other questions, the one question we need to ask the town council is if they would waive the fees for us to be able to use that facility around the first of September. Just for, from my point of view, it seems a little unproductive for you. You give us money and then we give it back to you with the use of the auditorium. For the same project that you gave us money to to do with this. So of course, it's up to you in the end, but we're, we're, we're here to ask.
My motion, we waive the auditorium rental fees for the Friends of Library event and to be held in September.
Next, I can promote him.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Could I ask one more thing about that? Is that just going to be the rental fee or is that the rental fee and the damage you bought?
Yeah, whole thing. Zero dollars. You want damage?
I want everyone you people to be part of the project.
Well, it's a party or you're putting nothing?
Well, you're you can't ask me to drink, I don't. So there wouldn't be alcohol breaks. And that could be the only place, well, I shouldn't say that. You know, I've been around a while. I've seen a lot of damage done in the town by people who didn't drink.
Yeah, yeah. So let me specify that we waive the rental fee and deposit fee for the Friends of the Library.
Okay. And just out of curiosity for, for everybody, what, what's the normal rental fee for the auditorium now?
The deposit is two fifty. The refundable deposit.
And.
There was some confusion as far as that was. Fifty dollars or a hundred and twenty dollars.
Yeah.
Last, last discussion I had with that was fifty dollar. So.
So it hasn't been up since nineteen eighty-two.
Which is something I'm gonna bring back. We'll talk about that.
It's a two million dollar building.
Any further discussion? May we have a vote?
Trustee Bethel.
Yes.
Trustee Price.
Yes.
Trustee Sally.
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Just one more small little interjection about the auditorium. Now, we're going to business. I was on the town council when Don Young gave the building to the town of Culver. And it's taken this long to get it to where it's an up-to-date facility. And I really want to thank the town for taking care of it. It's taken a long time. I think we, thank everybody who gave the F.
I hope so.
And I have to swallow my own pride here because when, after we, after we voted to accept the gift from Don Young, the question came up, what are we gonna do with it? Well, I was, it had replaced then. I said, tear it down. So we can, we can be thankful it's here and still admit that I said, that's what I said over eight years ago back then. Why are you not along on that? So, oh, I know. And probably after all the headaches it's been this summer with that, obviously, it's the last year. It's probably times when you guys wish that would happen too.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Maybe we can apply to the Guinness Book of Records for having the most expensive funds at Barnum District. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number eight, public hearing ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one. Second reading ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one, ordinance of the town of Culver. Colorado is adopting and amending the internal building code, the Colorado plumbing and gas code, the international mechanical code, the international existing building code, the international residential code, the national electric code, and the international energy conservation code, and the Colorado module model electric ready and solar ready code to be applied throughout the town of Culver, Colorado. There is an investment pay for those of public care.
Can we just know that for that, or do we have to read some things?
No, there, there's no discussion and you guys are ready to approve it at second reading. We've already approved it once.
Do I have to read the whole thing that we're approving or just the ordinance number?
You have been historically reading the entire file, but we don't know.
I'll be glad to. I move, we approve the second reading ordinance twenty twenty-five dash zero zero one, an ordinance of the town of Culver, Colorado, adopting and amending international building code, the Colorado plumbing, fuel, gas code, the international mechanical code, the international existing building code, the international residential code, the national electrical code, the international energy conservation code, and the Colorado model electric ready and solar ready code to apply throughout the town of Culver, Colorado.
Okay. And I will second that. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There we have a vote.
Trustee Bethel.
Yes.
Trustee Price.
Yes.
Trustee Sally.
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Item number nine, resolution number twelve, series of twenty twenty-five. Resolution. I have a motion on the board.
Appreciate that.
Of trustees of the town of Culver, Colorado regarding contracting for professional services, contractors and authorizing and directing the termination of contracts with KLA or KLJ Engineering.
This would terminate planning and engineering because they're a planner also.
Is this terminate player and engineering or just?
Yes. Yes, that's the intention that, and, excuse me, that doesn't mean that we wouldn't, uh, consider them for other projects going forward. Means that we don't, uh, that I anyway don't want to be locked into one engineering company uh, to do pretty much everything.
Yeah.
We need to consider each project and what their expertise is and consider what engineering would be the the best for the project that we're
That's right.
gonna move forward with.
That's right.
My motion, we approve resolution number twelve, series twenty-five, a resolution of the board of trustees of the town of Culver, Colorado regarding contracting for professional service contractors and authorizing and directing the termination of all contracts with KLJ Engineering.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discuss?
Mr. Mayor, I did request to comment on this. Um, I do believe that the agreement with Dola for the water line grant is contingent on KLJ remaining as engineer of record through the end of the construction of the water line.
And she has volunteered to finish up that project. No, she actually did not. She has resigned from that, but uh, the county has taken over seeing that for the town, for Dola.
As the engineering, as the engineer of record.
Not as the engineer of record, but for the Dola part that you're asking about.
No, I, I'm, I believe that the agreement with Dola that we sign over, you know, to accept the grant, even though basically on his, um, running it is contingent on KLJ remaining as the engineer of record for the town or for that project.
Right. And speaking with Dana, Dana was okay with working with the county since the county is well familiar with federal projects.
But the county is not acting against the engineer.
Bruce, are they gonna finish the school line projects? Because there was a task order that they were paid and contracted twenty-three thousand dollars to manage the school line project. Are they gonna complete that project?
Uh, yeah, that so the Dola grant would require that we uh, finish the project with KLJ, we would do that.
I mean, I'm sure they've, I don't know that they've already been paid, but that.
I've heard anything like that before, but if that's the case, then they're a week away. I mean, if that, they may have finished it.
Right. Has she been, have they been present for the inspections and whatnot?
Have they what?
Have they been present for the inspections?
Have they been present for the inspections?
No, I, not to my knowledge. Those we have.
Uh, some.
Some.
Yes.
Do we have an update on the fire hydrants that were not installed?
Not yet, actually. No, we're still working on that. Yeah.
My motion stands. Oh, maybe can I, can I amend my motion to, um, do you want me to read the whole thing over again, start over? With the exception of finishing the, okay. I move, we approve resolution number twelve, series twenty twenty-five, a resolution of the board of trustees of the town of Culver, Colorado regarding contracting for professional service contractors and authorizing and directing the termination of all contracts of KLJ Engineering, with the exception of them finishing out the school water line.
I second that motion.
Thank you.
She amended her motion from.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Sweet voice.
And we have a vote.
Trustee Bethel.
Yes.
Trustee Price.
Yes.
Trustee Sally.
Yes.
Trustee Winkleblack.
Yes.
Mayor Wilcox.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Item number ten, discussing regarding water service tap fees for the proposed and for the property owned by Forest Town and Bonnie Bass.
Bonnie's here with me tonight. You don't have to, you're welcome to stand up. I guess we're here for discussion, so is there some questions, something I can share, something I can? I requested to be on the agenda as an action item. This can's been kicked down the road kind of a long ways, so I don't understand what we're here to discuss. So if there are questions, I'm happy to visit.
My understanding is what the previous board vote or, or voted to was there the the thing where we would you never follow through and, and sign by those parties?
So can I remind you that the minutes of that night, the administrator has said that, uh, the pre-annexation agreement could not be completed because it was contingent upon the rural land division. We completed the rural land division on about the seventeenth, sixteenth, uh, we came in the next day. Bonnie and I have executed the, uh, pre-annexation agreement, which was the final document that, that you're referencing that wasn't completed. It, it, it seems that, um, that is trying to be used as an out. But the minutes clearly say, because it was contingent upon addresses and it was contingent upon parcel numbers. We just, uh, ten days ago got our parcel numbers finally, so, um, the the pre-annex, the minutes. The agreement entails annexing the land into the town to appropriately match property lines by the Mesa County Surveyor. At this time, it's not recommended to annex in this section of land. But the agreement has been drafted to start the process of annexation when available. The agreement is not yet to complete, which it is complete. All base, all good parties to agree, be nice, get some water taps. The process is still dependent upon Mesa County approval and contingent upon the division of the two parcels. So that's completed.
Why wasn't annexation available or recommended at this time?
Um, it goes back to the stigma of being in. The attorney at the time, um, the administrator at the time, and obviously the board at the time, maybe due to the size of it, maybe due to the offerings for the town that we provided, it just, they felt it was not desirable at that time. But again, that's here and there.
So we're trying to follow the ordinance now. The ordinance says we don't sell out-of-town water taps unless there's a hardship. Is, what's your hardship?
Um, so I agree. Um, and we talked at length on June first or July first about um, you guys trying to update the codes. Um, I think you know as trustees of the town of Culver that you set your codes. You can modify your codes, and in this case, an exception was made to the code on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. So that's all a non-issue. The process is done. On the July first meeting, to quote trustee Winkleblack, I think we ought to honor the previous board. There's nothing illegal going on, and we already have a contract to provide services and a pre-annexation agreement. You remember your own quote. I understand that this decision was already made, and I understand your frustration, and I'm in agreement with you. But I also feel an exception should be made because you have done a lot to get this far. That was your quote from July first. The mayor on July sixth texted me, I have no problem with you and understand your frustration on your government. I hope the best for your project. I still remember you donating the hardware for the car I fixed for someone I didn't even know across from Valor Grange. Thanks. So it was previously approved, it was previously accepted. Um, I didn't plan on talking this much, but since I am, uh, imagine my surprise on July second when I received a courtesy call from the new town attorney saying that the agreement was not going to be reviewed or revised as was instructed by the board, also instructed to put us on the agenda for the July fifteenth meeting. Me, in pure ignorance, showed up to the July fifteenth meeting expecting to be on the board, and I'm guessing we were removed because in the video, you can see that your clerk wrote down when it was requested to be put on that agenda. So it's between. It's between withholding the information from the board. Um, when I asked. Why the mayor called and stopped the attorney, especially where that was at our expense, we could have just paid the attorney to look at the documents. Uh, trustee Price found out that Mister Smith had asked the mayor to call and ask the attorney to stop reviewing the documents. And then tonight, instead of being on as a, an action item, we're on as a discussion item, so I feel that this is just. Um, by your contractor. Uh, being kicked, a can kicked down the road, maybe hoping that we cave and ask to be annexed, but that's not the case. The county has been waiting for me for almost six weeks to tell them the outcome of this board decision, the. The, I, I've said it before, the county is not happy. The, the county, obviously, if we get our taps, they're happy, their actions were fine, and we move forward with this. Um, if we don't get their taps, our taps, I'm not sure what the county's going to do. Uh, it wouldn't be the first time, according to the Daily Central, that the county has gone rounds with a municipality at the helm of Mister Smith, so.
A- a- actually, in, in correction for it, it was Mister Smith that requested that, I called Mister Smith and asked him.
I was told that, oh, you asked Mister Smith to ask you to ask the attorney not to look out.
If, if it was all right, what his opinion was about having the attorney. Come to the meeting or, or reviewing this because of what happened before. With the previous administration, it wasn't brought up to, to the board, it was a decision that, you know, before.
What was not brought up to the board?
Going, going to the attorney and having this discussion with you and the, the previous administrator and the previous attorney. That was done. Before, uh, from my understanding. Before the suggestion was made by the previous attorney and the previous administrator to go ahead with this. Uh, I agree.
I, you completely lost me there, I don't, I didn't follow, so it, and, and maybe I can clear it up, clear it up. The, uh. When I asked for the water taps. The previous attorney. My understanding directed the administrator to look at the code. When I questioned that, showed the scope of the project, the previous attorney and the administrator decided I needed to come in front of the board. I'm guessing he didn't want me to come in front of the board without a pre-annexation agreement, because he thought maybe I would get my water taps without a pre-annexation agreement. So there was no conflicts of interest, the town attorney and the administrator simply prepared documents. In, in the event that I was able to get tapped without a pre-annexation agreement. So now we have a pre-annexation agreement that says, again, if you utilize the water line easement that we granted you, we annex. If a nitrogen property annexes, if the Millers annex, if we decide to annex our remaining seventy acres, these parcels will annex. So that's why the pre-annexation agreement is in place, you asked me, the attorney on July first, if there was a conflict in me talking to him, and he said, no, there is not. So for there to be concern about him reviewing documents that were drafted by the previous town attorney. Only delayed this now over a month because the June fifteenth meeting obviously was a moot point because there was no forum. But, uh, this is just kicked down the road.
Well, I understand, the reason I say I understand is because there was. An agreement made between myself and the town.
Yeah, and the town re-nailed that, we've, we've talked about it time and time again, and I.
Clear back in two thousand and six, and I still don't have it straightened out, and I've spent my own time and money going. To the county, talking to the assessor's office, the surveyor, the, 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 the recorder, and, and, and going, going to a, a title company, so.
Sure, and there's.
I said, I understand, but, uh.
But without the information to discuss, I don't know what we're supposed to discuss.
I just feel at this point, we either follow the rules or we change the rules before we accept an agreement.
That.
They, because the agreement wasn't. Uh. Prosecuted or done inside and you couldn't, you couldn't sign it without these. Other things being done.
And I said right up front that it's a new board and a new employee, and I was happy to present and. And had the attorney had the chance to look at it and say it's a perfectly fine agreement, then the board could and still should tonight either decide to. Instruct town hall. To sell these taps, move to sign the, the already executed documents on our part, or to reneg on the previous board's. Agreement. Um, and then the county will know how to proceed, and we will know what our next step is.
See, I personally don't see a problem with, with, with an- annexing as, uh. When Carl Boss attacked the law line arrangements for the LDS church or. That it, it was his property, then it became another person's property, then it became Gordon's property, and Gordon's came, I mean, on that. Now it's Elisa Valdez's, at any rate. There's no prob, there's been no problem with the livestock, uh.
I agree, and I've said multiple times in hindsight, we would have saved a lot of money and had this done a year ago if we had just annexed. At this time, all I'm asking is this board to uphold the previous board's well-educated and looked at. By the attorney's documents, there's two board members in the room here that were on that board, this, this board is no different than any other board.
Well, what's happening here? Oh crap. Hey Denise? Hey Denise, I lost it. We went into a, a pause and all of a sudden then I lost it. Okay.
Your assessment back in progress?
Hey, you know. Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead. I lost you for a while, so I don't know quite where we are, but I'll wait till you finish.
And part of what Jessica was saying is because of. Straightening things out, and there hasn't been a board since I've been here that hasn't made, made some mistakes. Uh, as. I'm still dealing with all myself, but that's okay, we're getting it straightened out, so I'm not frustrated. At any rate. There have been resolutions passed. In past administrations with a path, public notice and proper pursuit, you're going through the state laws and whatnot, so. That's part of the reason why we want to. Follow the ordinance and, or I should say, I, I, we'll take a vote, but, uh.
I have mad respect for trying to fix things and, and clean up going forward, um, you know, the other dog whistle from the election is the public being treated terribly. How many examples from June eighteenth on do I have to mention about how Bonnie and myself have been treated in this building, so. I don't know. That. That these things are worth. Having your contract. You know, I see lots of time to fix things. We, I, in weeds, say, don't throw the baby out with the bathwater. If, if you feel you need to make an exception to the code tonight for this project, that's fine, I. I think we all know we can't fall on our swords on the code right now, because at the July first meeting, there was at least one complaint about the hatch house. We have a code about junk vehicles, we have lots of codes. So. I'm in support of. Making an exception to the code again, to align with the previous board. We just can't be kicked down the road and ignored. Otherwise, I'm going to spend three minutes here every meeting asking why this is still not decided.
Okay. You have a motion.
You know, uh. I tell you, you know, I, I feel in, in March of twenty-twenty-four, a contract to provide services and, and a pre-annexation agreement was made. And the contract was to be completed once all of the information was provided. All of the information has been provided, and I feel that we should honor the intent of, and the good faith. Of the previous board to approve this contract with Mister Town and Miss Betts, I just don't understand what the hiccup is. It's too easy, the contract is there, they've met everything, they can fill in the blanks. And why don't we just move forward, I've never seen anything that has been stalled to this degree in the past, not even as a board member, nor even in my process when I became a part of the town. And I just think that we should honor the previous board's intent and, and, uh, and approve this agreement and the purchase of this, uh. Of this town taps, so Anna, if you're done move, I'm going to make it, I'm going to make a motion. And I move that we, we approve the pre-annexation agreement and the purchase of out-of-town taps for Mister Towns and Miss Betts. The newly acquired land contingent upon the division of the properties.
We have the motion, do we have a second?
The problem is we have somebody from ten years ago that got a pre-annexation agreement, and we now have to go and fix that.
Right, but you don't have to fix this one. This one has its triggers, it's, in fact, I've said before. It'll trigger, I think, pretty rapidly. In fact, if you ask Andy to build the water line on the easement we've granted, this may trigger before we have a chance to sell the lots. So, so I understand that you, you have a pre-annexation agreement, that you so eloquently asked Mister Smith if he had asked Fred. For any of the details, but that's not how the operations have happened, it's the same as the, um, calling the, the ditch rider to get the Fitzpatrick turned on multiple times. When everybody knew I was right there, we were setting a box, um, the, the water commissioner suggested, have you talked to any ditch users? Ditch was on a couple of days later, so there's, there's better ways to work things, so. I understand. Frustration with previous pre-annexation agreement, I know you've read this thing to death because you're so thorough on this stuff. And like I say, if you just convince Andy to use that right away, we're going to annex anyway. So it's just, it's a moot point, and I didn't mean to interrupt the motion.
Bruce. You have anything to say?
Let me tell you, this is so obvious, this thing started with the first, the problem started with the first statement, the first statement, and I don't mean by you, Tori. The first statement was that it's undesirable for annexation, well, what the hell's undesirable about it? It's in your planning area. I mean, so, uh, what about, you know, terrible subject, is it undesirable, so we could D N X or something, I don't get that, I didn't get the. So that's the premise that got Tori and Bonnie in all this trouble.
No, that's, you wanting us to annex was the, the, the problem, that, that line right there. Was a good faith agreement between multiple adult parties.
Well. The solution, the obvious answer was that the prob, the property number one was desirable for annexation, it's desirable as any other place. And follow the town code that was in existence at the time. And those things didn't happen, and so. Here we are, and who knows why the agreement wasn't signed?
Well, no, literally, it says why the agreement wasn't signed.
No, it.
It says it could not be executed until the land division was.
Trying to prove a negative, and that's, you're swimming upstream on that one, but. Uh. I don't like to see you treat it that way, but. You could either comply with the ordinances or amend them. There we go.
Well. Like I say, with, uh, I mean, you're talking about thirty-six acres total.
Eighteen acres total.
Eighteen acres, divided into two. Two lots?
Yes.
Okay.
Five-five-five Glen Arm and five-eight-seven-nine-eight Delores Drive.
Whereas, uh. Like I say, a, a lease has got thirteen acres, and there hasn't been a problem.
I understand that, we beat this horse.
So. My perspective is, just add accident. And, uh. We obviously have to fix some, some things from the past and going forward as far as ordinances and, and ordinance, uh. Somebody to enforce those ordinances. But, uh.
So if you don't like the motion presented, then we need a motion to reneg on the previous board's commitment. I need to report something to the county. And at this point. Uh, the obvious answer is for us to come in and write you two nine-thousand-dollar checks, so we can move forward with this. But at this point, I just need to be able to tell the county something, because every time I say, oh, they wouldn't decide, or they took me off the agenda. Luckily, they're not upset with me.
I feel, I think Mason County knows what we've gone through here, so they understand we're trying, um. I feel for you, the spots you're in, I do, because you're just the first person that we're upholding the ordinance for when it comes to this. And I don't think we need a motion to reneg on a deal that was made before, what we need to do is give you an instruction that it's time to annex if you want in-town water tap fees according to our ordinance.
Don't want in-town water tap fees, I want out-of-town water tap fees. To. Correct the phrase, um, so.
We don't sell out-of-town water tap fees. Unless there's a hardship, and there's no hardship for instance.
At this point, the hardship is, we've spent over eighteen thousand dollars, fixed your water tower fence line back onto the property. Granted the easement for your gravel road access to the water tower, all at our expense, so there's our hardship. And if that's what we need at this point. I would say over eighteen thousand dollars is quite a hardship, so let's accept the code that way with this as our hardship instead of. Making a generic exception to the code, and then you're absolutely right, going forward, you have the code to reference and you have everything else, this. If, if this was my first time here. I would say makes good sense, I see what you're saying, um, and Bonnie and I would go. Have lunch and we make a plan and move on, but this isn't, this is my seventh or eighth time appearing. So. So there's your hardship.
I'm sorry, it wasn't done right.
It was done right. They made an exception to the code. It there was nothing illegal or moral.
Well, I understand. I mean, I agree.
So so it wasn't done maybe by the code or maybe an exception needed made in the motion to the code. But that's all stuff that can be cleaned up going forward. Because our our hardship. An exception to the code. I don't. You still have a motion on the table.
With no section. Does anybody else have a another motion? Or do we?
Hurry there a second? Questions?
And that's the question. And there there is no second. At this point. So.
So then there needs to be. Either a motion for the hardship. Or documentation that the commitments can renege. Because me calling the county and saying, hey. And someday the YouTube video will be up and they could watch themselves. I probably should have been recording it myself. There there needs to be an action, you know, right?
Bruce, what do you suggest?
And 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 you should ask.
What do you suggest?
All the ordinance were amended. There's a motion and a second. Vote?
There there's there's not a second. Uh. And that's.
I think you need, it needs an answer. I mean, uh. Needs an answer. Period.
Uh, might be a good time to remind that regardless of the action the county takes at this point. The plat's been fired. We have two lots. We can sell them with systems. We literally are only here asking to pay you nine thousand dollars twice to fulfill our commitment. We sell this with systems. Has anybody seen the squatters camp at the Molina Power Plant?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
There's only one squatters camp.
That's just a great example. I agree there everywhere. Bonnie and I don't want that as neighbors either. So. We can sell with systems right now and not write another check to the town of Culver. Or we can follow our commitment. We follow Town Colburn's commitment. And then the county is also happy. It's a win-win whether we make a hardship exception, a generic exception. Or what? We just. I agree a hundred percent that we need an answer.
Well. Quite frankly, that's why we brought Bruce on because of his experience, having years of experience that all those straighten things out and do things the proper way. Because administrations in the past didn't understand or didn't know.
I get it. So do we come in with our checkbooks and get a signature on the pre-annexation agreement tomorrow? Or do we not? I. I feel you're. I remember the look on your face. I I I I feel where you are. It's thankless, like I already said.
If there's a possibility that we can move on with the hardship motion, then I'll make, although I propose a hardship motion. To approve the pre-annexation agreement with the purchase of the out-of-town taps for Mr. Towns and Ms. Betts. The newly acquired land. Contingent upon the division of properties. That's my motion.
Where does the where does it end? Where does it end making exceptions for everybody? And it's not a hardship. It's an inconvenience and I understand that.
Eighteen thousand dollars is an inconvenience?
No, the hardship is that you don't want to annex for some reason.
Well, at this point, I don't want to annex because we have all the correct commitments and have spent all the money not to annex. I'll say it again. I've already said it tonight. In hindsight.
You chose that.
I understand that. I had no idea that we were gonna come into this situation.
I you read the ordinance, you would know that.
The ordinance was accepted on March nineteenth, twenty twenty four.
How much did it cost to annex?
We can ease that pain. You're in a position to do that.
It would have been. It would have been pennies on the dollar.
Zero to annex.
Oh, no, I know you. We would have been required to filing of paperwork and no, it would not have cost zero. And then we'd still have our five thousand dollar water taps, but we would have been. Money ahead.
Forty-five hundred dollars, but.
See, they're even cheaper.
So you should have annexed from the get-go.
We see that, but that's not where we're at.
Can I just add something to that? I watched the July first video. And I listened to all of you several times as here went for it originally presented. Back in March of a year ago. So. I'm really confused and a little concerned for this town council. Because you're trying to change the past. This is a done document. It's a year plus old. You can only move forward. You cannot correct. You can learn from the past, but you could not change it. And that's what you're trying to do. I understand that you want to follow what is the ordinance now in the codes. That was an exception. Something very back on March of twenty twenty four. You can't change that. It's a fact. You can only move forward and do what you want now about the same situation when it comes up in the future again. But I'm really confused and I'm concerned because you have greater issues to deal with. From what I observed in the videos.
Now you have a hardship motion.
Well, there again, hardships are perspective. Uh. My perspective is a hardship is is getting to the line. Uh, boring the road, having a lift, lift station and all that. It's like. The current owners of K L J have had it since the. Uh, previous owners. So. And and remember on the board, you know, everybody has a different perspective. So. I mean, I they don't even have to ask my angle. I walk down to the cabinet because I'll hold them. I will. Oh, no, here's somebody else from Culver again. So they just want to get it done right. The first time. And. I'm still in limbo after twenty years. But that's not a downfall. Or I'm not blaming them. So. I just. Personally, they they just think that annex and. I think the property will sell a problem and they'll. Now why annex? Did more across the street than had to annex? To get their tap fees and pay the pay the tap fees, go back to letting that these and park and then the hat. Right across the street before the. Compressor station. So that's just my personal personally.
Well, I made a motion, so let's either let it die or let's look for a second, but let's move on. I've made a motion. Let's act on it.
Well, I would say at this point, Gary, we don't have a second. So we're gonna have to let it die.
Then say so.
I just did.
Yeah. With me prompting you. Otherwise, it wasn't going to be said.
I don't care, Gary. I don't appreciate your.
I don't care what you appreciate, Kendall. I don't appreciate your lack of communication and your lack of leadership.
There again, your question mine. There are, I I I would love to go into a private conversation with you because I won't do it here. Out of respect for yourself.
Trusty Price, your your mind, I can see it running, running rampant.
Well, here's. My thing. You're you're just the first person that we're upholding this code to. You're you're just, it's an inconvenient time and it's not an attack on you.
No, no, not personal.
It's just, where does it stop?
So are you making a motion to renege the previous commitment?
I'm not making a motion to renege the previous commitment. The last commitment never was followed through with all the way. So that's that's done and over with. But. But. It's just an inconvenient time because I can tell you that next month, somebody might come in with the same.
No, it won't be the same because there's no previous board decision granting this situation. As you said yourself, I was the first to ever present and request this. So the process that we've been through is top to bottom by what was needed from everybody, what was requested from everybody. So so it's not at all. I I'll say it again. We can sell this right now and people can hold our. We want to write you two nine thousand dollar checks. So I don't see a problem with the exception for the hardship rule. We've literally spent over eighteen thousand dollars. Granted you guys all kinds of things that were messed up twenty years ago. And. There's our hardship. So that's our way around this without setting precedent to cause future problems. I'm with Bonnie. It's it's in the past and and it's all, it was a thousand steps that all finally fell into line when we came in here on June eighteenth.
This is the age-old problem in small towns. The people outside of the town want some town services, but they don't want to be part of the town. That's how many times have we seen that? How many times have people come in and they want to use their rodeo grants and then it gets even worse? They don't want to pay for it. For the auditory. This kind of stuff comes up all the time. Well, I don't, I'm not gonna tell you how to do it, but I just.
All motion that we uphold are found ordinance and that we not make an exception because there's not a hardship presented. To sell out-of-town water taps. Just you can have your decision, but I'm sorry if I'm. I'm sorry that it's happening this way.
Yeah, I don't know. I I do believe you're sorry. I think you're you're so hung on your codes. That you're not willing to let yourself because that's what you come in here on. I'll remind you, the night of the water tower boundary line adjustment, you asked if the town gave me what I needed. And I said, yeah, they did. Everything was good tonight. And March nineteenth, the town gave me what I needed.
The town policy for forty years has been no annexation. You don't get water unless there's some. Extraordinary circumstances.
Right, and we know that's been accepted multiple, multiple times. So that's neither here nor there.
Well, the last two years were big stuff, out-of-town water tap fees. Without any questions.
Right.
Or in-town water tap fee prices.
I know.
Because nobody was familiar with the ordinance or reading it.
Right. And and now they are because you have done diligent work in the ordinance book. And you have. A group that also wants to fix things and move forward. So. Again, I've interrupted. There's a motion stands.
There is a motion. Do we have a second? Or just a motion? I guess I'll go ahead and second it. So we have a motion and a second here for the discussion. Then we have a vote.
Trusty Bethel?
Yes.
Trusty Price?
Yes.
Trusty Staley?
Yes.
Trusty Winkle Black?
I'm unmuted.
We need to have a meeting here, Gary.
Okay, what I'm saying is, what is the motion we're acting on? We're voting on?
That we deny out-of-town water tap fees.
Tabs in general, not just the fees, correct?
Yeah, out-of-town water taps.
Yes.
Mayor Wilk.
Yeah.
Motion happens.
Thank you.
I have a relentless request to consider proclamation concerning America two fifty. Uh, Charlotte one fifty. We have presented the Plateau Valley Historical Society.
So this is what they're doing now, the stock donation?
I'm Tilda Evans and I'm representing.
Nobody, Jean.
No. Sorry. I'm Tilda Evans and I'm representing the Plateau Valley Historical Preservation Society. And in your package, you have a sample of the America two fifty Colorado one fifty proclamation for local governments. Uh, starting on July. Uh, fourth of twenty twenty five and running through December thirty one, twenty twenty six. State of Colorado is um working to commemorate the two hundred fiftieth anniversary of the U S and the one hundred fiftieth anniversary of the state of Colorado. And we are asking for the board to um sign this proclamation. Uh. Uh, celebrating the these historic events. Um, but this allows the uh community to. Work with history, Colorado and other organizations to put on events um. That have some kind of a connection to this celebration. Um. P B H P S is uh. Are we're serving as the local organizing committee only in the capacity of helping other interested organizations find resources and information. We are not planning, um, we do not want to run any uh any new events. That we don't already plan like the Memorial Day Celebration or um Santa Rosalía Day when we have that, nor do we want to create any new events. Um, if we just want to act as um. A helper. To our organizations like the heritage, uh, the heritage committee um. For the rodeo if they want to do additional things to commemorate um the celebration or um. Other, you know, organizations like that. We are not asking for any money or resources from the town, just the pro- just this proclamation. And in your folder, you also have a white paper talking about the commemoration as well.
Thank you, Tilda. I move that we consider. The proclamation concerning concerning America two fifty dash Colorado one fifty.
They're giving a motion and a second. There's room for discussion. Gary, then maybe I have a vote.
Trusty Bethel?
Yes.
Trusty Price?
Yes.
Trusty Staley?
Yes.
Trusty Winkle Black?
Yes.
Mayor White Fox?
Yes.
Motion passes your hand, listen.
Thank you.
And Barry? Bruce, did you want to present now or before?
Yeah, no, please, I'm. In a short schedule.
Yeah.
Um, the. Uh, my first item in my report. Um, has to do with Mike Nichols and. Some. Pay that he hasn't been receiving that certainly appears that he should have been. Um. At any rate, I want the board to know that um. Unless you tell me not to, we're gonna go back and compute the difference from the first of the year. Based on the budgeted, based on his budgeted salary, the approved, you know, budget salary. A seventy-one, four oh four. Do the arithmetic and um. Pay Mike, I told. Hey, Mike, I told him that if, if the board. Didn't have any problem with it, I'd leave it up to him whether he wanted to be. He want the difference in one check or do you want to spread it out over the rest of the year? But at any rate, I feel like it's money that he was owed and not paid and. Um, I just want to make sure the board knows about it, on board with it and.
Is this the only year that he was shorted on his pay according to payroll versus budget?
He's, it's, he's being paid less than the budgeted amount, if that's what the question was.
Is this the only, are there previous years from this?
You know, I don't know, I. I'm just not willing to bite that big dog. I mean, it's sort of, how far back you want to go? And really, you know, this isn't about, weren't complaining about it either. This is about, I was looking at. I was working on something else altogether and, oh my God, how, how did we get like this? Um, so let's fix it and. And I looked at the other two employees, in fact, since Mike's here. Uh, why don't you come on in or maybe even I can hear you.
Come on in here, Mike. I'll have a seat.
Come on down.
Yeah, I made a statement in here regarding the. The other two. And Mike told me, eh, not quite how I feel about it, so. Warm them up.
Okay, um, I just feel like, you know. Those guys have really stepped up, uh, Mike and Rory. Need to put that on record. Um, and they haven't. They haven't really asked for one, so it's not something that they've been right about, but I feel like it's time that we look at giving them a raise too. Yeah, I guess that's about it, right? I really think that they've done a good job for the town. Um, you can see the parks, you can see the streets. And I don't know the last time, you know, I don't ask when we get raises, you know, but. Um, I would like to give them one if you guys are agreeable.
I agree. They show and work hard every single day. They're very dependable. Bruce said the parks look better than when he was here before.
They've fixed quite the park though, hasn't he?
He is a smart guy.
Probably all the things too. But uh, if these. Uh, their salaries, they're a little bit above. The reasons I can't explain what the um, what the budget would show for their salary, so. That'll actually, this one will require some action by the board, but. Um, so Mike's going to go ahead and do their reviews for them, talk to them about. How are they overpaid and see how they react, that's always. But uh, help them about things that they need to work on or. Things that they're just doing real well and will have to come back to the board. Um, with whatever numbers he comes up with.
Sounds good.
Well, I agree that he has to do it for right this second anyway, but he might as well sit tight, Mike.
Well, we need employees that are very happy here and not constantly shopping the classifieds, so.
Better be happy. The rest of the stuff is kind of self-explanatory up to memo that. Uh, I hope you all got, Gary, did you receive an email from Dusty that actually, my. Memo this afternoon?
You have to ask him to unmute, I think.
Nice. He should be able to hear you. He's kind of long to him.
Oh yeah, it does say ask to unmute.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Did you receive any, the email from me earlier today with an update, with a memo from Bruce?
No. No, you, Dusty, you let me know that you'd sent me something, but I checked my mail a couple of times and no, I did not receive it.
Sent it twice.
Well. I'm sorry for that, Gary. That's not anybody's fault but my own because I had. Kind of ran out of time. I had intended to get that done before the packets went out. If I'd made that, we wouldn't have had a problem. But um, at any rate, the situation is this. That uh, I'm giving an awful lot of thought to. How to go about hiring a town administrator. Uh, and regardless of what earlier. What's the word I'm looking for in? The earlier documents indicated for qualifications and experience and. On and on, and that's not to say they weren't done well, but they probably weren't done the way that I would have. I would have done kind of different. But the more that I've thought about this. Uh, the ti- the town administrator job and the more. I've kind of looked around. Um, I've come to the point that I think that, oh. Been that I'm thinking too much on this, if you want to know the truth, that the answer is right here in front of me. Um, terms of qualifications, you know, the uh. That's the usual stuff, uh, college degree, uh. Master's degree preferred, uh, experience, you know. Uh, depending on which one you look at, uh, three years, five years, that kind of thing. Um, but where I'm really different from, where I really disagree with. Uh, the way those job descriptions are written is. They really don't emphasize public works. And that's what this job is about. This job is about water, wastewater. All the public works things.
Infrastructure.
Say, storm drainage, curbs and gutters, right, with all the stuff that. That goes on here is al- also obviously about the budgets and so forth, but uh. Uh, budgets can be learned. And trying to avoid reading this whole thing. The more I worked with Mike Nichols, the more I became aware that uh. That he's uh, really a smart guy. And given the opportunity to uh, make decisions. He's pretty good at it. I mean, he's got a lot of experience with the town. He. Uh, came very close to finishing his college degree. She needed an internship to finish that. Wasn't particularly relevant to this job, but. Not many are, to be honest, truth. But at any rate, um. And I thought about the discussion that I had with the board when I agreed, when you agreed to have me uh. Assist you for some period of time. I thought it was three months and Dusty claims it's six and at any rate.
I thought it was twelve. I thought it was twelve.
And that's why we don't let women think too much. At any rate. Mike has, Mike has qualifications. And he's a smart guy. He, uh. I said it in a memo, I hate saying this kind of stuff in a public meeting, but I. And I have to do it, I mean, so. I think that if Mike has a shortcoming in terms of looking at this job, it's that. The years that he's worked here, they've kind of kept him in the dark almost. When I talked to him about his budget. It's really obvious that. He hasn't had. Discussions where people are higher up the food chain than him. And the more that I work with him, the, the more he. Uh, gains the self-confidence. He even told me no about something today. But um, seriously, I think that, I think the s- smartest thing that the town could do. Given, if you advertise for this job. I think the chances of you finding somebody.
If me.
Are slimmer men. None. And the problem. Is, you know, it's uh, the small town, kind of at the end of the road, sort of a thing, you know? You know, the orbit thirty miles from anywhere kind of a deal. Um. And so what you're likely to get are people that are leaving a job for reasons that. For bad reasons, or they're young and inexperienced. And so they'll give you a resume that kind of looks the opposite. And one of the problems, of course, is finding facts from, separating fact from fiction in the resumes. Uh, at, at any rate, so say we advertise tomorrow, you're. At least three months out. And what I said, I think the person you're going to come up with, the best choice is probably not going to be. A person that can really do the job that you, you want to see step into it and step into the job and get to work. And one of the things with that, uh, when the board and I discussed my situation. Was uh, factually wrote it into the contract, was that. Uh, not only would I assist you in finding the right person. But that I would uh, stick it out for a while and help train you. And let's face it, what I really want in this job, what you really want in the job, you feel free to correct me if you disagree, but. Uh, the ideal candidate is a local guy. That has the qualifications and the smarts, has at least uh. Uh, some knowledge of budgets and so forth. But a great deal of knowledge in the public works. Here he is. And. Let's just, you know, I hate saying this kind of stuff and, but Mike is about as likable a person as I already met. Me and Mike are a little different on that score. I mean, that's not a joke. I mean, that's just, I know how it is and that's one of the things that I. Have worried about. And really, I worry about this. The most important thing has got to be Mike's family. And so if we get him in here and I teach him to be a jerk. And that's not really what I'm trying to say. The, the big part of the job is saying no. I mean, no, we're, who doesn't provide for that? And so my answer has to be no. Uh, and what that will do for Mike. When we get him in, if we get him in that position is that people are going to start disliking him because of that. And talking behind his back and that's the kind of the downside of. Uh, hiring a local guy and with me, I just, you know, so they say whatever they want. I go home, you know? But at any rate, and I don't think that this is an experiment. I think that this is something that's. Could easily work, is likely to work. But to make Mike, I. Let me tell you, I've given a lot of thought about how to do this. And I think that the best answer is to call Mike, I hate the term, but the interim town manager. I'm the consultant. Mike is the interim town manager. I'll work with him, try to uh, teach him some things that he doesn't know and some of the basic. You know, how do you do this and that kind of stuff? Let him interact with the board. Um, and the public. And uh, at some point down the road. Mike and the board will make a decision as to, so you want to make this permanent? But in the meantime, one of the most important things here for both Mike and the town is that. We'd be able to revert. So let's just say, for instance, that Mike. Mike does this for a while and decides, you know, this job just isn't for me. I liked what I was doing. I'd like to go back to, so. We need to leave that job, leave, leave his public, leave him in the public works job. Have him. Be doing both jobs. And remember, I think that. I suspect that the board felt all along that the town administrator job is really kind of a part-time position. That's how, uh, that's how I've felt about it. Since nineteen eighty-two, let's put it that way. And so. Let's not get crazy about this and say, okay, Mike, you're the town manager or the town administrator. And we'll go hire a public works director and we'll go forward. That would be a horrendous mistake. Mike needs to, you know, try this shoe on, see if it fits, and the board needs to do the same. And if it works. Which I think it will, terrific. You got just the right guy. He's anchored, he's got, he owns his home, his family's here, all that. He's a local guy. Knows all the people, knows the public works. There's no reason that this can't work. I'll tell you, he's the best candidate. And that's, that's what would happen. I mean, I looked through some of these old, there was a, a PhD in there. His PhD was in astronomy. And kind of, the waters about that, and that's what you're going to get. I talked to a gal this week that. I'll just tell you this because it was kind of funny, well, the cat walked across my desk that I had never seen before. I was talking to this young lady and, and she told me that she wanted to work side by side with me at home. I thought, wow, that's going to be kind of crowded, me and her and her husband. The kids are just. But at any rate, uh, getting back to the town, uh, I think the same to do if you're agreeable. Give Mike the joint title. And don't get loud about increasing his pay. Um, he in effect got a pay increase, it should have got a January one, but at any rate. Um. The number that I came up with was twelve and a half percent. That put him at about eighty thousand. Three hundred, three thirty, something like that. And that salary level wouldn't be. Wouldn't be too much to pay him for the job he's doing at Public Works Department. So that if he decides that he doesn't want to be the town administrator. Or if the board decides he doesn't want to, that he shouldn't be in town administrator, he can revert to that. And you're right back where you were the first day that I talked to you. The only thing that he's lost is time. Uh, and it took me a while. To convince Mike that this, that this will work. And I think that's because. He was, you know, the old statement about mushrooms that keep them in the dark and feed them manure or what have you. Uh, that's kind of how he's been treated here. Hadn't really been allowed to use his brain, or he'd be. He'd be the ideal candidate now. He'd be a better administrator than, than what he's been allowed to be. And so. If you agree with this, just don't fill the public works director's job. Until you make a decision, a final decision, as to like in the administrator job. And you might not want to fill that. And you might not want to fill that anyway. You think about it going back. I think my feeling from looking into you all in the eyes was that. Really thought administrative job was part-time. And that's what I thought, maybe you were reading it out for me, I don't know, but at any rate. Just, you know, try this. See how it fits. And so I asked Mike to be here, and I didn't even have to ask him to get a clean shirt on.
Thank you, Mike, for being willing.
And that's the last nice thing I want you to say.
Nervous, to tell you the truth, there, you know, there's a lot to this job, I understand that. There's a lot to that job, I just, you know, it's. It'll have. I just hope that. If I'm not doing a good job, I hope you guys will tell me, you know, and then we'll readjust. So it's going to be a challenge, I'm going to have to learn a lot. And that's why it's really important for me to have Mike and Rory over there. Taking care of things when I, you know, when I'm not there. You know how busy this town is. So it's. A little nervous, I'll tell you the truth, you know, because I really want to do a good job and. I know what this job entails, it's a lot of work and.
You know, that kind of goes quite first, and two, with your gotten comfortable, you need help.
Yeah, and I will try, you know, it's, it's going to be hard to probably admit that I couldn't do it, but you know, if it does come to that. I'll be honest with you guys, and as long as you let me go back to public works, that's, you know, kind of my passion, that's where.
You're gone.
That's understandable too. But if it doesn't work out, you know, at least I tried it and hopefully help the town, but I'd rather go back to the public works to that.
That's what makes you lucrative for the position, is you're humble, you're kind, you don't crap about anybody, you get along with everybody.
I know.
You're not egging for this job, you're getting your arm twisted. The people who are lining up, wanting to be in charge are the ones we gotta.
You've been loyal. I've been on tours to the sewer plant in the water with you and Kurt, there's good communication there. I think there's a lot of common sense. Experience. You've dealt with the engineers, can communicate with them. And so in a sense, in a lot of ways, you've been doing the job. Though there's some minor tweaks, in my opinion, compared to what you've been doing. Yeah, there's some learning, there's some growth, but. You're experience wise and personality wise, I think that you would fit the job very well.
I mean, we'll find it first.
I appreciate you being willing, John.
Thanks for considering this, you know, because I, I do feel it's like a. A trial, you know? You got to hit run, and you know, we have some stuff coming up and I just hope we can do it with you guys and the support of the community. Bruce, you know, the ladies in the office, they're heavily leaning heavily on that. But you know. If it doesn't work out, it doesn't work out, I'm not going to be hurt, you know, it's, it's something that. We'll try that briefing to get there, but if it's, if we see a problem, we'll try to fix it. If it doesn't, then I'll go back to my digging in the dirt and be happy.
Questions? Can see Gary, but I don't know.
Can you hear us, Gary?
Yeah, I can hear you. You know, there's no doubt in my mind that Mike Nichols could do the job, you know, he's been working for the town. A long time, he understands it, I know he always had the support of the previous town administrator, so. In terms of recommending him to be the interim. What I say is, fine, come on board, be the town administrator, and listen, then let's find a maintenance director. I'm just not saying, I don't think should be both in one, I think that's putting too much on Mike. And I think the thing about it is when, when, when things are to happen and we need more in the way of maintenance. Then that's where we're going to be concerned about the fact that we've got one person who's overloaded in responsibility. So in my opinion, if Mike is willing to go for it for the town administrator, then I say then let's start looking for somebody that's the head of maintenance.
Here, if you'd like to hold that position open for now during his interim period. So he can go right back to it if he doesn't want.
If he feels the shoe doesn't fit, he would like to go back on the town and switch his his passion. They need to make a motion right now. Can we just make a direction? Do they need to make a? No, normally they do anything, the shower, right in the budget, it's quite a bit higher than. What I need is. Board's consensus of the board for approval, or disapproval, I mean, if that's the way it is, that's the way it is.
I approve, but you know what, I think you should give this a shot, and if you don't dig it. Like you said, get back into the dirt and be happy where you're at, you're like, no, I'd love to be a. And I see that this.
Appreciate you guys letting me do that, I know this is kind of a. A show to do things, you know, and.
No, it's a good way to do things. See, I was lucky enough when I was graduate school, the city of Portwood hired, hired me, trained me to be city manager. They just did that, and. I've been looking for someone like this the other day, and looking for somebody that. I can do the same with and. Try and, try it a lot harder than you would have imagined, but. I couldn't get anybody to do that, not from CSU or CU. Nowhere, those kids these days are a little different breed of that than.
Thank you, Bruce.
What I can say from trustee Michael Black should go ahead and approve. Mike Nichols to take that position. Everybody else. You're, if you heard.
And call in if you're not going to show, okay?
Communication.
Communication, Mike. Oh, we're going back to six?
Thank you, Bruce. Thank you, Mike.
So the item number twelve is the broadband and monitoring projects update by Carly pistol. A building permit inspections for D and C and L and associated tower. B Culver auditorium special inspections, correspondence with. Then our done ink. Building permit and inspections for the town of Culver.
Yes, thank you for getting the building permits, that's awesome. And inspections.
No.
Mike, do you know what's going on with those windows out front?
Yes, I believe, and I might double check this, I believe that they're going to leave those the same for the historical. Aspect of it, and they'll replace the glass and bring them up to. To rebuild them, yeah.
Rebuild every ceiling.
Yep, but I believe those they wanted to keep the same for the historical side of it, and I think so we can. Maybe Danny or, I, I don't know, I believe that's why they left those two the same.
I had to explain that, I remember that.
Yeah, and so they, I think they're getting pretty close to getting to that point, actually, yeah.
Any further discussions on that?
Can speak a little bit on the broadband if you guys want. I think everything is ran to the building, to the businesses or to the, the town properties, I should say. And so they have to come back and just do a few minor things, everything's been tested. And now it's time to start bringing people in, so.
So the wire is on the fiber.
Yeah, it is.
Did we find out about the institutions that had pledged donations? Did you find out?
Yes. And they all did make pledges, and it's my understanding that those pledges. Have, they have not made payments toward those pledges, so that is something I will add to my list. To continue to try and collect those, Carla has multiple times been in communication with, with them. And then things just kind of. Whether it's job changeovers on the other side or this side. So that is on my list to pick up where she left off. And I will send a verified release to the attorney. Because I think it's a good idea that he reviews that before we start implementing it. If that is okay with. All of you.
Yeah, I think we discussed that when we was here, we asked for him to review it, remember? That was a few days ago.
Yeah, I just sat through all those videos again, so you think I would remember, but I can.
I could be remembering wrong, believe it or not. Sometimes things really don't happen outside of reality.
So yeah, I will send that off to him tomorrow.
Then I saw we have to, we have to come up with the amount to charge. A fair amount to charge.
For the auditorium?
No, for. Yeah, for the, for the anchor locations. So it says for comparison, region ten charges a flat rate of one ninety-five per month for the use of their point-to-point fiber and then. For in-town arrangements and two thirty per mile for longer routes.
So yes, that is something that the board is going to have to discuss and make a decision on. I spoke with Carla last week regarding this. And we will actually end up having a Zoom call with hers, just so she can really go through the entire project, because I'm not. Completely familiar with the entire project. And then that would be part of it, is getting kind of those base numbers, what we think might be a jumping off point for you guys. To bring that to you, and then you guys can make that decision. Based on the information that you're feeling that.
I understand some contracts have come out that. It was much cheaper than it was both the ISPs up here over in Delta, but since. Those businesses have sold and the contracts have come out. Then Region Ten or whoever is controlling. The access. The contracts, they're, they're in negotiation right now, so it might be good to communicate with them as well, see where they're at.
I believe that all will be with the.
Yeah, I, I, I. I just can't see us getting any contract down, but the low game.
And we can actually piggyback off of their contract, do they contract with Region Ten, we can piggyback off of their contract, they have for maintenance, because. They would have this, they would have that general knowledge, so we would have to go out and. Find our own person where we could just piggyback off of that contract.
Yeah, it seemed like the period end was discussed that they would just maintain. Or which.
Their company that does.
Yes, I think, I don't know if that was decided on the future.
I think that we may, that we may have. Put, may have gone, gone into an agreement for maintenance, but the fearing. Yeah, I hope they've scheduled that call with Carla and Region Ten within the next week, which is.
And I have no idea where he's at, but I do. If something doesn't work out there. The, the current technician with Lumen, Don McKay, is very well. Familiar with all of it, he handles. May know Lennas or Ainsley, Mesa and Culver, and he's been there for thirty years. He was, he was working at Brown Office, but when I left and brought it on. Basically, he got, got into the system to deal with US West, and then he went with VDI and. As sex progressed for VDI, there's three centuries to make it live, and he's, he's familiar with. Insight now, from the office. Do the guests, whether it's spice and gable, testing, calling testers. A lot of those people that have retired from Lumen or US West, that's I'm trying to. And all those people that I worked with, the Pats. They were. You know. Probably Bruce's age, whatever, you know? So, but anyway, it might be worth reaching out to him or. Whatever, depending on what happens with communications. Region Ben and the very end. So we're on the same page. But he would, like Mike. It would be a good name to throw in the hat, because he, he still is, is of age to work and. Has the experience, the knowledge. And maybe ready to retire from Lumen and, and want a little bit smaller gear. As I said, when I was up here as the phone man, this was the best job in the whole phone, that he takes it there and comes and sends the office the nice language today that. Because you have to finish your own pursuits, you have to figure out, fortunately, I asked an engineer that was supportive, he is still a contractor. So.
The long list then.
Just, just might do sense.
Any other staff of things?
I just have a few. You will notice that Seated Shimmer Wright is the town's new administrative assistant, she started on June twenty-first. And I'm sure everybody in the room already knows, there's some not going to waste the time. But I'm excited to work with her, she brings an energy to the office. She is a go-getter, as you all well know. And I'm excited to continue to work with her. And get her trained up, she is fast learning. And she is quick. She finishes projects. Before I can get the next project lined up. Before I can get the next project lined up. Um, so I'm very happy. And honored to be spending my days with Alyssa. And I am now honored, I found out today or yesterday, that I get to add him to my list of coworkers, I'm on this side. Um, so I am super excited about that, and I will do anything and everything I can to support these two in their success. In their positions and continued endeavors with the town of Culver. Um. That sounded like I was trying to leave, I'm not, I'm still gonna be here, I'm not going anywhere, um. I don't know if any of you have had a chance to look at your website. But it is a completely revised website, and if there are things that you don't like, if there are things that you're seeing that you're like, hmm, that doesn't work. Please stop in the town hall and let me know, we are still at a point where we can tweak it. And do some things, so if you see things you don't like that was coming, then let me know, and we'll do our best. Um, there are things that I've already noticed. That need to be added to it, and then I'll work with her to get those things added back on. Um, your municipal code is now completely recodified and appears on your website. Um, so if you go into the town government at the top, there is a municipal code tab. That tab, that link takes you directly to many code, and that is your complete new recodified code. It is not. It is what we're we're operating under right now. As a part of that, we also have Muni Docs. Which is run by Civics Plus, where we can upload documents to that that are public record, resolutions, ordinances. Um, proclamations, so that we're not fogging down the website. With all of that information, um, right now, at when she went to convert it, we have the better part of ten years. Of packets and agendas in minutes on there. I'm gonna ask for a little bit of direction, and can we shorten that down to two? If I could put everything else on Muni Docs.
I think that's good, yeah.
Still wasn't working on, uh, budget and. Expenditures, you mentioned, uh, very targeted. The conversion.
So I did have a conference with Cassell and I. It got rescheduled to. Not next week, but the week after on Tuesday. So we will convert at that point, and everything in this cell is gonna go to the cloud. Um, so that will be accomplished. Two weeks from today. Roughly. So then that server back there becomes a midpoint, because all of our documents are already on the cloud.
Until it's not a secret, you can call Dusty anytime and ask, I do.
About financials or what? Since May.
Yeah, there was years, there was years of the best, I think minutes and expenditures didn't get submitted for six or eight months, I don't know.
I can tell you, as you all know, probably noticed, all of the minutes have been caught up. Um, YouTube is caught up. I am working, so I'm checking boxes as I go, financials are my next box. So hopefully by the next meeting, we're gonna have a stack, well, funny reading material, we're gonna have a stack of financial information. And it is just what I have had to do to get by, it is not normal, it will not continue. Past once I am current. It will go back to every month, you will get things, um, it's just where I'm at right now.
We appreciate it.
You're doing a great job, thank you.
She's been rocking the minutes, guys, yeah.
Go ahead, um, as we talked today, um. As I do a lot of meeting, uh, minutes and stuff and go to meetings for municipals, allies, um. It's really, really hard. To get your financials a hundred percent accurate by having a meeting the first Tuesday of the month. You guys all have bank accounts, you know for a fact that you do not get your bank statement that quickly after the end of the month.
Right.
I would make the suggestion that you try and either move your meetings to the second. Week of the month, maybe on a Thursday.
Right.
That gives you a two week period to close out your previous month. And be able to reconcile everything, and then you'll have accurate documents.
Right.
As you noticed on the documents that Carla was presenting many, many times, it said estimated for exhaust, that's why. It was estimated because she didn't know what was gonna be in there, because it wasn't posted and she didn't have the document.
Well, that I say pending.
Right, right. That or estimated or pending, right.
And then there was partial stuff from the previous month, yeah, this, yeah.
Right, and so, but I think if you. Give that extra time. To have that, so you're guaranteeing can be reconciled, it gives you time to get all your invoices in from. The previous month from vendors, some people don't send out their invoices until the thirtieth. So it just gives that little bit of extra time, so you have more accurate information.
Right, not guesstimation.
So that's just a suggestion that I have from being in here, working and stuff, and it's just.
And I did find out with Dusty, we're gonna actually get the report out of Cassell instead of a.
Oh, yeah. I.
Yeah. I'm really excited about that, and that includes deposit.
I'm working on that one, I researched that in between my other projects as I can, um, I have not come across a deposit. Report yet, but I will continue to look.
Okay.
Um, and keep you up to date on that.
Another municipality um emailed me over, but their. Expenditure looks like, and I'm sure it's straight out of the sun, I'd be glad to share it with you.
Yeah, and I'm not interested in recreating work.
Yeah.
I've got none of that.
She said, when she looked at her, she was surprised at.
And I don't, there may be a reason why, I'm not here to question anybody's reasoning as to what they were doing, what they were doing.
No.
Um.
Right.
But I just don't have the time to recreate or copy and.
I might get to share that with you, and then you can actually see what the actual reports are.
That would be perfect if you will do that.
Yeah, I'll email you a. Thing.
There is a plethora of reports and Cassell. Yeah, and I think it's just. Choosing which one is the correct one.
Yeah.
And which ones you guys want to see.
You know, in the um. Budget versus actual. Is it, yeah. That was an awesome thing that we have to see one time.
And I think that's beneficial for you guys to know.
Quarterly reports, I saw in previous minutes, they used to do quarterly. And sometimes even monthly reports. So quarterly, definitely.
Well, not, yeah. I'll look into, and we can find tune that.
And that's.
We can work together to find tune, here's a report, does the board like this report, or is this not working with that? So we can work together to find tune that. And I don't have any, any other company beyond that.
Thank you, Dusty. Thank you, Alyssa.
You're welcome. Hold on, he says it's very much he's telling.
Well, there is a public correspondent, yeah, thank you note from Oak West.
Yes, I have number fourteen, dark public correspondence, and let's say thank you from North. Oak West, blanking out by for the spring sway. I can ask Mike earlier, um. Uh, sir. There's maybe your water, there's there's kind of some. Thoughts and. Something on the drilling door, that's the best way to handle that, maybe it's got bits and dark activities and whatnot.
Yeah, that's gonna be kind of our goal, moving forward is moving the bigger pipelines out, you're talking about this.
Yeah.
Moving it up to number one on our uh. CIP plan, you know, for the future, and it's something that um. I think that we need to, well, we have to address it, we, it deals with our our water right. Our municipal water, um, irrigation, it's a big one, so we'll probably be moving that up the list a little bit. And start working on that, I know. Um, K L J worked on it, S G M was worked on it, um. Westwater, I think everybody in the world has worked on this pipeline, um, trying to figure out the best way to get it. So, um, we will be, that you guys are gonna hear a lot about the user pipeline here coming up in the future, hopefully. Um, obviously, we're. Gonna take everything that we've got and kind of. Figure out what the best route is to to replace, I think it's like two, two point eight miles long. So it's, it's gonna be a big one, but it's probably, you know, one of our top three. Water sources the town has, and it's worth keeping, so hopefully, yeah, so, um. And I think prior, in the past, I I believe they they believe that too, it's just, you know, we've um marking things off our list, and that's the next one, so.
With that, I'll call a meeting adjourned.